We'll call the meeting to order for the Wacomiko County Council Legislative Session 2018-22 for October 2nd, 2018. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Amen. For every day, how we get our name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The bound is to kingdom and power and glory forever. Amen. I want to pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from September 18th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 4th in reference to the Health Department lease agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 4th in reference to the installation of street signs.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the open work session minutes from September 4th, 2018. An update on the Conley Mill property.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Good morning, good evening, Ms. Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 107, 2018, approving a first amendment to lease agreement between Wacomiko County, Maryland, and Piedmont Airlines for property located at the Salisbury-Ocean City-Wacomiko Regional Airport. Council held a work session on this request at the September 4th meeting. A public notice was published in the Daily Times and posted on the county's website stating that a public hearing would be held this evening.
At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 107, 2018. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 107-2018. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 107, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Ms. Hurley?
Okay. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 108, 2018, to amend the fiscal years 2019-2023 capital improvement program and capital budget to reallocate $450,000 of the fiscal year 19 general plan PEGO from the Stars and ADS-B equipment project to the Runway 14-32 extension project for the Salisbury-Ocean City-Wacomiko Regional Airport. Council held a work session on this request on September 18th. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this evening and was also posted on the county's website.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 108, 2018. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 108, 2018. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 108, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number 109, 2018, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the Maryland Aviation Administration in the amount of $145,355 for airfield markings at the Salisbury-Ocean City-Wacomiko Regional Airport. And Weston Young is here if there are any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 109, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Looks like we're getting some good things done to the airport.
Yep, I would say so. All those in favor of Resolution 109, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number 110, 2018. This is the bond resolution. This resolution provides for the issuance and sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $10,500,000. Projects to be funded are shown on Page 4 of the bond resolution and include several Board of Ed projects and a new public safety building and contingency funds. The bond sale will be held on October 16th.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 110, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this the amount we did last year?
Less.
It's less than last year.
Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 110, 2018, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Nexus Resolution Number 111, 2018, extending the date for voting on Legislative Bill 2018-09, which is to enact a new Chapter 133 of the Wacomiko County Code titled Animal Control. Charter Section 311 provides that all legislation not passed within 60 days after its introduction shall fail unless five members of the council affirmatively vote to extend the deadline. Legislative Bill 2018-09 was introduced on August 7th, 2018, and will fail if it's not acted upon by October 6th. This bill is scheduled for a work session later this evening, and this resolution will extend the deadline date to October 16th.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 111, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. The note that's unanimous.
Okay. The next item for business is Resolution Number 106, 2018, approving a lease agreement between Wacomiko County, Maryland, and E.S. Atkins, LLC, for property located at 801 North Salisbury Boulevard. This resolution was introduced on September 18th, but was tabled to allow Mr. Taylor some extra time to work out some of the provisions with administration. The version on the council table is slightly different than what is in the brief book. I believe Lynn Sandy just passed around a red line version of the mold provision that was updated, but the version on the council table is the new Exhibit A to the resolution.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 106, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, Ms. Hurley, so any discussion that we have from here in, you know, in reference to the red line version, et cetera? I'm assuming that there's going to be amendments that are going to be necessary to be presented since it's not the exact resolution, it's in the brief book?
The actual red line version was attached to the resolution before it was introduced, so no motions would need to be made to amend that lease at this time unless you want to make further changes to it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Discussion?
Okay, let me understand that this lease is the lease that's recommended by the landlord and agreed to by the county executive.
Good evening, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration. What you have before you with the red line, last night we received the mold suggestions from Council Attorney Taylor. We presented those today to the owner. Unfortunately, John McClellan, who you spoke with last time regarding this lease, was unable to make it tonight. The owner was okay with the majority of the comments. The red lines reflect what they were requested changed from Mr. Taylor's revisions.
And otherwise, as presented, what we have tonight is okay?
Is acceptable to the owner. Correct.
Any other questions? So as I understand, then, no amendments are necessary in order to satisfy the concerns over the mold provisions. Is that correct?
That is correct because the lease was updated before the resolution was introduced.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions from council?
I didn't. Joe, go ahead. Is this what you sent in to them, basically?
Let me, if I can, just a minute or two, kind of give you a rough overview of everything that's happened since the last meeting when we suggested some changes. And all of the changes that I suggested were adopted, with the exception of the provision on the mold. And the overall history of that is, I suggested a mold addendum that has language in it that's right out of the state of Maryland's leases for office and other spaces that had leases. They rejected that more or less entirely and came back with a provision that had several things in it that I think are matters of concern. The first was, there was really no hard definition of the type of mold that would be actionable or objectionable and how that would be determined. That was one. That has been more or less addressed, so let's put that off to the side. The other, and probably more significant, concern was if there were mold that would be actionable, what the county's rights and remedies would be. And the way it was proposed when they came back the first time was that the only remedy that the county would have would be to terminate the lease as to the particular suites, I think there are five or six different suites that are being leased in that building, that had the mold. Not the entire lease, just those particular suites, whichever they might be. I proposed two changes to that. Number one, to provide that the county would have a self-help remedy. In other words, if you look at the lease, it talks about if the landlord is unable or unwilling to eliminate the actionable mold. And that's what we're talking about, this situation where they're either unable or simply say, "We're not going to do it. We're unwilling to do it." Then what would the county's remedy be? What would their rights be? Well, as proposed, they wanted the counties, the only remedy they would have would be to leave, terminate the lease as to those particular suites, whatever they might be, that not, if all of them didn't have the mold, then they could only terminate as to those that did. I proposed the self-help remedy, that the county, if they were unwilling to remediate the situation, that the county could do it at its expense, but back that expense out of rent, out of future rent, so it would be essentially made whole. It could do the work and be made whole for doing it. They've essentially objected to that, scratched that out. I also provided that if the county wanted to terminate, they could terminate as to the entire premises, in other words, all of the suites, so they wouldn't have a situation where they terminated as to maybe two out of the five or six suites and had to move that part of the office elsewhere to some other site. So essentially, now they've got two different sites for what is, I gather, is going to be a kind of a combined operation in that property. And they've also rejected that. So we're now back to more or less, the only remedy the county has is to terminate as to any suites that have mold in it, but not the entire premises. And frankly, I think that's pretty unrealistic and unacceptable. Now, the current landlord may be the best landlord you can find in town, in the state, in the world, but the property could be sold tomorrow to a new landlord. So I think any thought that, well, we've got a great landlord and will always treat us right, you've got to be a little careful about that because the property can be sold in an instant, and the county has no say in that. And that's my view on it. I think that frankly, what I've suggested is very reasonable. If they don't want to remedy a mold situation, then the county ought to be able to do it, and they ought to have the other option. If they want to terminate, they ought to be able to terminate as to the entire premises.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Wilber, you were on this end of the arrangement, and I'm assuming that as it's written now seems to be satisfactory to the executive branch and it also seems to be satisfactory to you as the county attorney.
That's correct.
And I guess maybe we would need your opinion as to Mr. Taylor's discussion and Mr. Taylor's opinion on this.
What I would say is, many leases do not have mold provisions at all. For instance, that Piedmont lease that was approved earlier tonight, and, you know, Piedmont's not a corporation without decent legal counsel. Certainly, this doesn't accomplish all that you would like necessarily to have, but it's certainly movement by the landlord to address a mold situation. We don't have a mold situation that anyone is aware of out there right now. As I understand it, there's two leases currently in effect.
Yes, there's two existing leases that have been there. The oldest one going back to 2000, and in the 18 years that they've been there, there's been no reports of mold. So that I would think would be taken into consideration.
So considering all the factors, the executive is okay with this lease?
I guess what I think about is, why are we moving theirs? Because we've had mold problems where we're at now.
Hydrostatic, yeah, it's bound to have mold with water pressure coming in.
That's why we're leaving the premises we're at now to go there is because we have a problem. Not that they're going to transfer with a desk or anything like that. I mean, you have to look at a little history here, you know, of why we're having to even rent the space there again.
Sure. We need to get the Health Department employees out of the basement of the hurdle building to be able to examine and hopefully fix the issues we're having in the basement. So we're trying to move them to this facility. We have two entities, a dental unit and a WIC unit of the Health Department there now. You know, I can tell you, talking with the owner and the representatives today, the self-help remedy is not acceptable to them in any form. There's no limit to how much the county could spend and then say, well, we write off our rent on that. So the thought is, they're fine extending the amount of time if we wanted to terminate the lease because there was mold. We would be given more time if that was necessary, but the whole self-help remedy is not acceptable.
Could I add just one thing?
I can understand, Mr. Taylor, I can understand your concern. I'm not so certain, though, that the mold is going to be a real issue at this location. It never has been. I don't see where the issue has come up that often anywhere near that general vicinity. The other thing, too, is that I believe that if you're going to complain to a landlord about a mold issue, the first thing that landlord's going to do is try to address it immediately because they have other tenants in the building, and they also know that they're going to have to re-lease that space at some time or another. And the last thing I believe anybody wants is to have a reputation of a building that has mold in it.
If there is concern about mold, is there going to be an inspection? Since it's in the lease here, are we going to hire somebody to do an inspection and make sure there wasn't mold?
Yeah, if you read the proposed change, which is the red line on the right-hand side of that page, you'll see that the tenant may, at its sole cost and expense, retain the services of an industrial hygienist certified by the American Board of Industrial Hygienists. So we would have it tested, and then they would have to remedy it.
But we would have to pay for it.
Correct.
Right.
John?
I would suspect that a tenant would be capable of identifying mold since they're in the health business fairly rapidly also, and would be able to address any concerns that would come up that makes us pretty, not necessary, because we would address it so quickly. You know, it's like seeing mold in a shower, you know? You go ahead and you take care of it immediately rather than have a professional come in and remediate. And as the Health Department is moving in there, I would hope you'd be able to identify mold as mold and the different kinds of mold, and would say, okay, this is what our problem is. Communication with the landlord, and like we spoke of, this landlord has a reputation of taking care of its property, so whether they change later or whether they're sold out or not, I think this property was inspected prior to. Inspection showed that there were no indications of any problems of this type, and so I can't imagine why we would leave this in.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess the worst-case scenario, if something does happen, they'll be moving out real swiftly and having to find another place to go.
That's correct.
I'm not concerned about the mold, because I've never heard of a history of it, but I was just wondering why it was in this agreement.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
This resolution was actually introduced at the last meeting, so I would make the recommendation that you would amend the resolution to, say, Exhibit A as amended.
To amend it, to include Exhibit A?
As amended.
As amended?
Yes.
All right. I need a motion on the floor. So moved. I need a, all right, second?
Second.
All right. Further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution has been amended. Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Any further discussion on the resolution as amended? All those in favor of the resolution as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes as amended. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
That's all I have.
At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, please come to the podium and state your name and your address of residence and your concerns.
Mr. President, my name is John Holston. I live in Hebron, Maryland.
My name is Adam Walls. I reside in the county of Port Cham, South Dakota Drive, member of the Dog Rivals Review Committee.
We're here tonight for a couple of minutes to talk about a couple of issues that Mrs. Walls, I believe, has communicated to the county about, and that is, and pardon me, I'm just made aware of this about a half an hour ago, there's apparently nothing in the ordinance that says the Humane Society, and I understand the Humane Society is a separate entity.
Mr. Holston, hang on one second, because I want to make sure they can hear you on PAC 14. Craig's good? All right, thank you.
Okay, certainly, no problem. I understand that, you know, we know that the Humane Society is separate from the county and does not report to the county itself. However, the Humane Society does receive a sum of money from the county every year. That is public tax money that goes to the Humane Society, and apparently there are no provisions anywhere in the ordinance, the bylaws of the Humane Society, or wherever, that says that the Humane Society needs to report back to the county how they're spending that money, what it's being used for, et cetera, et cetera, et so forth. Am I right, Ms. Walls?
Yes, I believe there's somewhere between $200,000 to $300,000 appropriated a year to them, to the society. As far as I know, I've learned a lot about the society as to, the county gets blamed for many things when animal control does not do their job. And so therefore, hopefully, people will learn that the society is run by the board, am I correct in saying that? And the board is appointed by whom?
Themselves.
By whom?
Themselves, basically.
The county, the board is appointed by themselves?
The other board members. Correct?
I really don't know.
I was asking somebody in the audience.
I'm asking that question.
They are appointed by the board members.
I'm sorry.
Restrictory funding.
Right, right, right. But the board is appointed by themselves. And who is the one person that appoints that board? The Humane Society Director? I'm trying to find out, you know?
Selected by the membership.
By the membership of the board.
Of the agency.
Okay. Okay. And so what we're asking for, since it's taxpayers' money being appropriated to the Humane Society, is we would like to see where that money is going and to make sure it is going to benefit the society and the animals. Okay? And I don't know what can be done about that, but I feel very strongly something should be done about that, being its taxpayers' money.
A couple of the other issues are that we feel that the bylaws, it would be good for somebody, somebody in the county to review the bylaws of the Humane Society to, because we are spending taxpayer money here, to make sure that everything is on the up and up. Nobody is saying that everything isn't on the up and up, but it'd be a good idea to know exactly what's going on and where the money's going to, because we are putting money into that organization. We also feel like the animal control officers might need better training on the state and local laws, because a lot of times, there are stories of complaints out there where the officer goes out, can't do anything because it's, you know, it's not covered under the law in this fashion or such, and perhaps a little better training is needed to be done. And also, it would be good if the officer could report back to the complainant whenever they go out on a complaint as to what is going on and what kind of action has been taken.
I don't know. I have been told, your cabin, okay, I have been told, when a report was made for an animal that needed rescue, I went back to find out what they could do, and I was told they could do, not tell me anything about the animal. I don't think that's right. I think that needs to be changed. So many times in the past, things have been said, and when people do not know the laws of the county, you know, they're blaming Humane Society or they're blaming the county. So if you do not make, you know, the laws need to be specific so that their work can be done, that you know it's being done, and we know where the taxpayers' money is being spent.
But the public has confidence in the organization as well.
Yeah. I think that the thing being is, right now, everything could be running very smoothly in the society. You don't know who you're going to get employed years down the line. So have the laws specific so that they have to be accountable. It seems there's not much accountability there, and it needs to be. It needs to be for the public. It needs to be for the animals. It needs to be for the county taxpayers' money.
You make good points. You know, as a, to help clarify, we, what the county has the right to do is to inspect their books whenever we choose. The internal audit that we have for Wacomiko County is allowed to perform audits on any agency or organization which receives funding from the county. And we did audit them in 2016, August of 2016, the, our internal auditor did audit the Humane Society. So we do recognize that, and we do exercise that privilege. So I don't think we're asleep at the wheel there, but, you know, perhaps it wouldn't hurt to maybe consider it on an annual basis. I know that they have auditing done as well on their own. The second part of that is to review their bylaws. It is a nonprofit organization. I don't know how much the county, as a government agency, can intrude upon the nonprofit, but we could certainly, I'm sure there's always means by which to cooperate without having to force someone's hand, so it's certainly worth looking into.
I think that the people of the county just want accountability from the officers, that they're doing their job, not that you're not doing your job. I know you do. I've heard kinds of things about you. But he may not be here forever. Somebody else comes along. If you do not have those laws set in stone for them, then things can be done, animals left out there to die.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Purnell. I'm a resident of Salisbury, Maryland, Wacomiko County. As the questions I asked last week when you had the meeting at the Civic Center for the new expansion of the dump, I still have several concerns. I learned last week that there are sixteen, six cells that are used presently at the dump. You have permission to do four more. The new location will have 12, so that means 12 and four is 16. And if you add 16 more, that's almost making the new site or the continued site almost three times as large as what it is. The line of variance between where it stops and the water table that we have on the west side is only four and a half feet. As the water table goes up, what does that do to that protection that we As the water table goes up, what does that do to that protection that we have? I also want to know about the liner that you use on the charts that you said last week, fifty percent will be used for waste for Purdue. I need to understand the decay rate of the, um, what is, I'm trying to think the word, of what the waste from Purdue, what that ammonia and the nitrates have on the decay of that liner and how that, that it's gonna then filter down into the water on the west side. When we first moved over there, we had to change our septic systems because the, the septic tanks that we had were ten, and the nitrate level in that area was already high, and it put holes in there, and we had to change to cement. So I don't know what fabric you're using. I don't think it's enough variance for four and a half feet. I'm really close to getting tired that everything that's a negative is on the west side of the Wycomico River, and that nothing positive really comes our way. There has got to be another site. I would like to know how many other sites were reviewed before you all decided to expand us some more, and can somebody else in the county share in the waste dumpage beside the west side of town?
Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
County Council and County Executive. I have some letters here that I would like to hand out to you that were emailed to you and the County Executive, May 5th.
Yep, sure.
And this is not in reference to the landfill, but I will say something after I get finished with this. Um, I emailed this letter to the County Executive, and I CC'd the County Council members in reference to a lady in our community, a woman, a pillar in our community, um, having the streets, a street named after, a road named after her, and, um, I had never heard a thing back in reference to this taking place. Now, in our community, in the African-American community, in the city of Salisbury, in Wycomico County, I haven't had, since I've been alive, known one person, one African-American, who has had a business for fifty years. This lady worked hard and tireless in a community, and she gave to her community. And I think that it would be fitting to have not Jersey Road, because I understand that the postal area and how that would conflict with some things, but South and North Carollo named after Miss Loretta B. Jolly. I haven't seen it on the agenda. I have waited since May, June, July, August, September, here it is October. I know it may not be important to you all, but it is important to our community that this is done. Um, she gave, and we want to make sure that we give something back to her and her family. And her family and some of the, the members of the community have agreed with, with what I've said today, and some of them couldn't come, and some of them are here, and some of them are not here for that same reason, but I would like to see this done as soon as possible. She deserves it.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. You forgot to mention that you're a member of the Salisbury City Council.
Oh, yes, I am a member of Salisbury City Council, District One.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, and I apologize for no one getting back to you. Um, I was under the impression that the council was, not under the impression, but I, I really felt that the council was gonna work on a policy and procedure, and we had actually, um, reached out to other counties in the state to try to see how they had established policies and procedures for this, and we are in the mix on that. Now, it's probably my fault for not having put this back on the agenda.
Yes.
But, you know, we did address our circumstances in Wycomico and realized that we didn't have any type of, uh, plan, anything that said, okay, this person has to, you know, go, you know, follow certain qualifications in order to, um, to have the, the street named after them. Because two or three people could come in and say, we'd like to have this named after us, and we have to be able to hand them a procedure.
Okay.
And that's what we were going to do as a work session, but we'll follow up on that and, um, within the next thirty days to find out exactly where we are with it to address your concerns, okay?
Thank you, I would greatly appreciate it.
I apologize for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, um, Katrina also spoke about the, the proposals for the southern and the northern landfill, um, and I'm gonna speak, I'm waiting for my statistics to come back for the whole, entire Wycomico County as far as the cancer rate in Wycomico County and the cancer rate on the west side of Salisbury. I too, you know, I, I do agree with Katrina on a lot of issues and a lot of her concerns here, um, because it seems like everything that does, and I said it at the meeting last week, everything that is contaminated has been on the west side of Salisbury, everything. And I feel as though, you know, I mean, you, you, you all, um, not only just you all, but you should find other sites. I know we're not the only side that has land that you could put a landfill. I know it's an extension from the old landfill, but we want to live. We want to live, and I feel as though this landfill and the landfills before, as I mentioned last week, Lake Street Dump, Fifty Incinerator, Brick Hill Road, Dead Horse Plant, now landfill. And here comes another landfill, Purdue. Yes, it gives jobs, but there's contamination and pollution. So I, I just ask that you rethink your plan, rethink what you're doing, think about the people and the lives that you would, you know, spare. I know it probably needs to be done, but does it need to be done now? And not only am I thinking about now, I'm thinking about our future generations that are to come. So, I thank you for your time and just ponder on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dorita Jones. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I live on the west side, and I want to also speak to the landfill, but I want to digress just a little. My parents always taught us to treat people the way you want it to be treated. Excuse me. For many years, I worked in the school system. I had children who were black, children who were white, children who came from affluent families, children who did not, children who were fast learners, children who were slow. But I knew that each parent sent to me the best that they had, and I felt it was my responsibility to make the best decision for all of those children. I would hope that the persons in charge of the landfill location will think also of your constituents and make the best decision for all who are affected. As had been said, I recall, as April and, and Katrina said, it seems that the negatives have always been on the west side of town. I thought of the incinerator. There was something that I called a mini landfill that was on Nellamill Road, and we had to go to bat to get that stopped. Then the chicken farm. We had to fight to get a new school at West Salisbury. Charles H. Chipman was a new school, but when it had the name, it was just Chipman, and we had to fight to get his full name. And the lettering on that is smaller than most, uh, buildings that are named. The highway that has come through disproportionately affected the west side of town. So I'm hoping that anyone who has something to do with the location of the landfill will take all of these factors into consideration and will think of other sites. As April said, I'm sure there are other places. We've held it for a long time, so I'm sure there are other places where it could be served. I know the landfill is necessary, but please think of all of your constituents before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Good evening, Council President, Council Members, the audience. My name is Bill Harden. I live in, um, Delmar, Maryland, in Wycomico County, and I'm here to speak on the land donation, Conley Mill, at that location. We call it the pit in the neighborhood that I live in, the Shadow Hills. I want to read to you quickly a letter that, that was written dated in January the fourth, twenty thirteen, and I'll announce the, um, the author of that letter once I'm complete reading it, and I have a reason for doing it that way. The letter's addressed to Captain Paul Simon at the Salisbury Police Department. Now, even though this is not totally a county issue, it is a city slash county issue, in our opinion, as, as members of the Shadow Hills Homeowners Association. Dear Captain Simon, I'm writing you on behalf of Conley Mill Limited Partnership, CMLP, the owner of the referenced land located south but not fronting on Conley Mill Road on the west side of the railroad tracks and on the north side of Nellamill Road Run, just above your shooting range facility. Access to the property is via an unimproved fifty-foot right-of-way running southerly from Conley Mill Road past the conveyor plastics property on the west. I enclose the current tax stamp, blah, blah, blah. The owner of the property has for years posted and reposted the property in an effort to keep trespassers out, but to little avail. The signs are quickly torn down. The trespassers consist largely of dirt bikers, foil wheelers, people running, people hunting, and target shooting. I emphasize that the property is in the city limits where the discharge of the foul on this gravity. The activities of the trespassers not only damage the property, but they also constitute a nuisance and potential danger to the owners and occupants of the residents in the adjoining Shadow Hills subdivision, particularly those living on Stillwood Drive. Those residents have, with CMLP's permission, tried to identify and stop the trespassers with very limited success. They frequently call your department, being the city police, and we call the sheriff's office too, but usually by the time an officer arrives, the trespassers have disappeared. It is believed that they monitor your radios. It is our understanding that members of the community, the Shadow Hills community, have scheduled a meeting with you next week to discuss the situation. Um, the point being, and let me, let me just finish up. If you need any additional information or desire our cooperation in any way which we are capable, please so advise. This letter was written and signed by R.S. Smithhurst Jr., um, who represented the owners at that time. Now, my purpose in being here tonight as part of the Homeowners Association, and I apologize upfront, but I'm using this meeting sort of as a catalyst to put this situation out to the public. I've asked for two meetings with Mayor Jake Day. I have yet to meet with him. They were both canceled each time I made that request. What we come home to in the, um, Shadow Hills development after Day's work is what I'm about to play to you right now. Campfires back there, dirt bikes. I saw one dirt biker that had a three-year-old kid holding in one hand, held in one hand, and riding a dirt bike in the others. Um, this video shows a campfire in the back, and this is almost a weekly, a weekly issue. Christmas, they're back there. Super Bowl Sunday, they're back there. I really take offense with that, but here's what we have. Now, just this, that's a small sample of the continuing problem that we have back there. I've gone back there myself. I have no authority as a police officer, when I was a police officer, to go back there. Um, but the times that I've gone back there, I've had individuals back there with semi-automatic weapons, literally drinking liquor from a bottle and, and sitting around a campfire, and of course, the dirt bikers do the same when they come back there. So my purpose in bringing it forth to you once again is to just use this as a platform to get it out there, and secondly, um, I'm hoping that the land is donated to the council, to the, to the county, and hopes that someone will do something back there to deal with the situation that we've been dealing with for years. The date of that letter, again, was January fourth, twenty thirteen, and I'll be more than glad to provide any of the video that I have or a copy of any letters that we have trying to deal with this situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
You know, Council President? My name's Chris Taylor. I'm also a resident of Shadow Hills, and I just want to reiterate the fact that, yeah, that is a daily, weekly event, shooting. I've been back there myself. I'm also, uh, work at the sheriff's office, so I've done that side of it too, and I can tell you, we would rather deal with the extra traffic that a park may come. You know, my child's sitting back there. I look forward to taking him to the proposed. Sounds awesome. So I'm just saying, I'm in favor if I, please, take the property and donate and make it a huge park. I think it would benefit us, our neighborhood, Delmar, the county. I think, I think there's nothing positive for us.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Scott Taylor, Wycomico County, also in Shadow Hills, no relation to Chris Taylor, but maybe a relation to the next person. Um, I'll take it back, uh, five years ago on this property. Um, we came home from Winterfest Lights in Ocean City. Uh, there were cops at the end of Foskey Lane, where it meets Conley Mill. Lights flashing, stopped, asked, "We okay to go?" "Where do you live?" "Shadow Hills." "Yeah, you're good to go." Went in, Shadow Hills, um, came up to our driveway, pulled in the garage, and we saw more lights. I said, "You all stay right here." I went through to the back door in the house where I saw a, um, light coming through the woods, very close to this property. This is actually the, my house is, backs up to the farm, which is in county, uh, limits. The property that we're talking about is city. Um, the pits is city, so that's part of the issue, but, um, coming through the woods was a light. Um, I'm scared to death because police officers are outside of our development. Opened the door, said, "Can I help you?" And it's a member of the, not SWAT team, I've been told, tactical team, all black, the gun with the light on top. Identify yourself. "Hey, I'm Scott Taylor, homeowner." Okay, they were apparently looking for somebody that had fled from the police, used the pits to dump a car. I believe they sat that car on fire and fled. Um, it was a police chase that they were looking for this person. All, all hands on deck, coming through the woods. He asked, uh, "If my basement was locked," went down, checked that door, went in my shed, checked that, told me to get in the house. That's five years ago. Could be the same thing tonight on that property, I don't know. Um, like, has been spoken about, it is a, a nuisance property right now. The owners don't seem to be able to do anything with it despite their efforts to put up no trespassing signs. Um, they're not willing to apparently put any more money into fencing or anything like that around the property. So it's, it, we've done everything we can do to try. Um, I'm, uh, not going back there. I'm not like Mr. Harden and, uh, brave enough to go back there, because I don't know what I'll be met by if I try to confront somebody that's back there. Uh, 5:45 this Sunday night, uh, cooking out on the grill, I hear dirt bikes. Sounded like they were in my backyard, and they're not quiet. They're not, uh, they're, they're modified. Um, 10:30 at night, trying to go to sleep, hear four-wheel, four-wheel trucks back there, and again, they're, they're the loud ones, um, probably, uh, illegal mufflers, probably. A lot of times, two and three in the morning, we hear the same thing, and people say, "Why don't you call the police?" Well, quite frankly, they're not gonna get there until the people have left, and they might have more important things to do. Um, and I realize that. They're not gonna put that at the top of the list probably to get back there and try to track someone down. And when we do call, who do we call? Sometimes county has said, "Are you sure it's on our property?" Because that's the farmland. City will say, "Oh, that's county property." "No, it's city property." "Oh, but you gotta go through to county property to get there." We understand that. There's nothing I can do about that. Um, we are in favor of, these, my family, my household, Shadow Hills, in, um, taking a donation of the land. Think it butts up to Parker Complex. It could be used in the future for expansion of that complex. Who would see twenty years ago that we wouldn't have the number of baseball and softball fields that we have now at Parker? Uh, when I was playing soccer out there in, in high school, uh, we would have never saw that. That could be used for that. Until that time, it could be used for recreation. I understand the pits can continue to be dug out for the dirt- Understand, the pits can continue to be dug out for the dirt in other places in the county. So I just think it would be very beneficial to the county to have that piece of property and preserve that green space, also handle a nuisance property at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Casey Taylor. I am also a member, or live in Shadow Hills. I am here to speak to you on behalf of the homeowners association. I am the president of the association. The elected board members of Shadow Hills Homeowners Association would like to give their support of the Wacomico County accepting the property donation of Conley Mill Road parcel, commonly known as the pits. The HOA board members addressed this topic at our July 2019 board meeting, and all agreed that we would like to see this property in the hands of the county and used for parks and rec use. This property has been a continuous concern for the residents of Shadow Hills Development. These concerns have been communicated to the current landowners representative with little attempts to have it, sorry, current activities that are occurring daily on this property. The landowners are not local residents, to the best of our knowledge, but have only attempted to post no trespassing signs, which are quickly removed by the people using the property without written permission. Activities include motorcycles, dirt bikes, ATV riding, and four-wheeling by trucks. Large bonfires and parties have also been held on the property, and multiple gunshots have been heard in the area at all times during the day and night. We do not believe these shots are from the Salisbury Police Department gun range, as they practice, as their practice has a different tempo and sequence than the ones that are heard at the pits. The shots are often heard at late hours and in the middle of the night, not common to the SPD to be practicing. We have also, have been told about other illegal activity that have occurred in the pits, such as abandoned stolen vehicles and illegal drug use, but have not, do not have firsthand knowledge if this is true or not. Policing the property has been a big concern to SPD when phone calls have been made and has been difficult to initiate. We believe that this because the property is in the jurisdiction of the Salisbury Police Department, but commonly accessed by the right-of-way from Conley Mill Road or from the railroad tracks, which are policed by Wacomico County Sheriff's Department. On more than one occasion, we have been told that the SPD, that this is not their area. SPD does not have a vehicle that can access this area as well. They have to call Wacomico County Sheriff's Office. It is the opinion of the HOA that all these activities occurring on the property could easily, be easily addressed and stopped by converting this to the county, to county property and removing it from the city limits. This will allow Wacomico County Sheriff's Office to provide the policing, which would help alleviate the confused issue. Other simple security measures, such as ditches or three-foot poles to block access and no trespassing signs, would help secure the property. The HOA believes this valuable property will be an asset to Wacomico County in the immediate future and for generations of citizens to come. There is always, always be land in the county that can be used for parks and wrecks, but it will not be the land that is already adjoining the current county park, as this is. Also to note, the proximity of the land is to the population center and major access roads along, are already in place in our county. Simply put, to the Shadow Hills HOA, this opportunity is too great to pass up for the tax, for tax money that is currently provided to the county and the minimal expense it will take to maintain it as it currently sits. Thank you for your service to make our community a better place. Shadow Hills HOA hopes that you, hopes you will make the right decision and feel this is a win-win for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Good evening, Mr. Cannon, members of the council. I'm Eddie Boyd, and I live here in Wacomico County. There's been some discussion earlier regarding the solid waste disposal, and I want to just take you back because not all of you, I don't believe, were at the informations, information session last week. A number of us received notice that we should pick up a certified letter that was sent to us from, initially, we thought it was from the Department of the Public, I guess, Public Works. However, later I learned that the letter actually was submitted on the county exec's stationary, but it really was from Maryland's Environmental Protection Agency. The letter notified us that there was an information session being held on September 25th, and the purpose of that session was to provide information regarding a proposal that had been submitted to the Maryland Environmental Protection Agency Solid Waste Division regarding the expansion of the current landfill. So obviously, I was rather taken aback by that. I had not heard any discussion regarding whether or not the landfill would be expanded prior to this notice, nor had I heard any discussion about, are there alternatives to disposing the waste other than continually stored it in the ground? So during the hearing, the first thing, I think, there was a consultant there speaking on behalf of Public Works, and they indicated that two expansion areas had been identified in the initial proposal. One, they called the north expansion area, which would have been on the corner of Route 50 and Nellum Mill Road, the new Nellum Mill Road. And then there was a second one, they called the southern area, which I have here on this little map, and I hope all of you have seen that, and if not, I'm sure Mr. Davis will be able to get you a copy of it, across the road from the current landfill. Well, the consultant indicated that the northern area was off the table. So I assume that is still accurate. I have no idea whether or not it is or not. My sense was, from the Environmental Protection Agency, roughly, I think they would, they said, "It's on the table until there are some written notification provided them that says that it's off the table." So the first thing I would ask is that it be removed from the table in the right way whereby this initial proposal be modified in writing so that only, the only site that is in the proposal is the site that's called the southern expansion area. All right? That's the first thing. But I think in a broader sense, there needs to be some robust discussion within the county regarding, you know, what's the best way, the safest way to dispose of the solid waste in the county? And let's figure out how we can do that so that no citizen in the county is negatively impacted, certainly from a health standpoint, based on a decision that we've made or that the county has made regarding how that solid waste is disposed. And I think this decision was really, in my judgment, a rushed decision. I talked to Councilmember Davis, and he was unaware even that the northern area was even proposed, and he indicated that, as far as he knew, that had never come before the county council. It was simply submitted by the Department of Public Works. But in any case, that aside, I think we need to slow this whole process down and figure out and have a robust discussion within the county as to what's the best way to dispose of the solid waste that we're generating in the county without burying it and creating, possibly creating problems for those of us who live in the area near this particular site. And obviously, there may be sites in the county whereby no homeowner would be impacted, where you wouldn't have to send out these certified letters alarming folk about a decision that, you know, is imminent. And of course, I was very surprised by it. Went down to the library to try and get a copy of the document. That took a little work, but I certainly was able to get that. So what I'm asking the county to do is to initiate a discussion about two things, and I think one is the solid waste, and to be really a forward-looking county, and let's have a good discussion about how we're going to deal with sewage and water for the full county. At some point, we have to get away from septic systems and wells and really have a discussion about how do we provide good water, sewage, and how do we dispose of this solid waste in a way where no particular entity in the county is negatively impacted by those decisions?
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank God for the opportunity to be here one more time. My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm president of Wacomico County, NAACP. To President Cannon and the county council and all, those are similar. Good evening. On behalf of the NAACP and myself, I live on the west side, and for years, when it's, when it's hot, there's an unbearable odor in the air from time to time. The other thing is, I basically don't have anything to add to what's been said. We're in support of what Katrina Purnell, April Jackson, Mrs. Jones, and Dr. Boyd shared with you. We support them heart-heartedly as to what they said. We urge you to cancel whatever plans to extend the landfill on the west side. And as I listen, I have a concern that, of the way it's being handled, a few people being notified by registered mail, and not everyone have an input. I don't know what we can do, whatever, but you are the county council, so I'm thinking you have, you and this county executive have something to say over what the Department of Public Works does. So we're asking you for some accountability in that, and how this whole situation has been handled back, back, and rethink it. And as Katrina said, I thought about that today when I was thinking about coming here. I was raised in this county, and I remember the incinerator being where the police department is, and the landfill. And anything that's bad, or whatever, or bad in environmental way, is being put on the west side. So that gives a negative feeling to those of us that live on the west side of what folks think about us as citizens, and whether we're important, in reference to our health is important. So I hope that you give that, I hope that you change how things have worked out and that you find another location for the expansion. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, President Ashanti. Any other public comments? Seeing on council comments.
Yes. Regarding to the hearing last Monday, that was an MDE hearing. Those notices were sent out by MDE. We didn't send those notices out, and they usually send them out to people that's close proximity to where the action is going to take place. As far as the sites, we, the council, had approved this southern site for the addition to the landfill. When I got a phone call that Monday about the northern site being on the, the plans for MDE, I was shocked. So I made some phone calls, and they said it is. So we were under, and I made some phone calls to a couple councilmen, and they showed up because we were under the impression that the northern site was not to be considered because we were not going to purchase it, and we were given, we had given approval for the southern site. So we too were caught off guard, as you all were too. And as far as the costs and health, I agree wholeheartedly with you. You know, you can't put a price on people's health. And just to say that this is a cost-effective way to do something, that don't mean it's always right. It could cost some money to do it. There is other ways of disposing of trash, but some people seem that it's the cost, that they don't seem that we should go that route. I do. I'm like Dr. Boyd. There is other ways of disposing of trash, and I think this should be considered, along with Dr. Boyd. I don't know if we realize that we're the only county in the state that don't have its own sanitation department right now. We have to depend on Salisbury for water. We on an annex, bring a business into Wacomico County that depends on Salisbury. Wacomico County don't have its own sanitation department, and that's sad. Biggest this county is, largest county is, we don't have our own water sewer. And like you said, wells and septic systems in Wacomico County are failing. And as they fail, they're not able to get permits to put in new wells, so what they're doing? They have to hook up the city water. And if you keep annexing, annexing these developments into the city, there's going to be no Wacomico. It's going to be the Salisbury, Hebron, Mardella, or the cities that got a sanitation department. So we do have to do something about it, Dr. Boyd. I wholeheartedly agree with you.
Any other council comments?
I just want to say, we were at, there was environmental forum a couple weeks ago, and we were talking about a lot of issues, and I made the comment at the time, is, you know, people see elected officials, you know, they see what's on the news and stuff like that. I said, "But we spend, spend a lot of time talking about issues like landfills and things like that that don't really make the news and don't really, aren't really glamorous issues, but they're very important issues." To Dr. Boyd's comments about alternatives to the landfill, I think all of us would welcome alternatives to expanding the landfill. The landfill is an expensive venture to operate. There's a lot of environmental issues that come up with it. It's been, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out a cost-effective way to deal with the city's garbage, or the city, the county's garbage problems, and it's tied into the Conley Mill issue that we're talking about tonight. So this council has examined some alternatives to landfill, to increase recycling rate, to deal with trash. We've either come up with they're not cost-effective, the technology's not there, but the county is definitely exploring other options besides just putting trash in the ground. So I want people to be assured about that. So, you know, and I can't speak for the operation of the landfill. We don't, you know, there's more experts in this room that know much more about the landfill than I do. But if the technology is there to dispose of garbage without putting it in the ground that doesn't overburden the taxpayers, I think every, every county official in this room would welcome that, that if we don't have to, you know, expand this landfill and find places to buy dirt or have dirt donated and dig it up and get the permits, it would be a lot better for all of us involved. So we definitely share that. I mean, I speak, I share that goal. I think my fellow members share the goal of finding alternatives to burying garbage. Right now, I don't think there's a lot of realistic alternatives, although, but we're continuing to explore that. So I just want people to be assured that, that we are looking and we are trying to find alternatives to, to the landfill, to kind of an old-fashioned method of getting rid of that garbage there, so.
Any other council comments?
Right, yes, to reiterate what Councilman Davis said, I was under the impression that we had a work session at great lengths about this. And as I understand it, the council was adamantly opposed to the north end purchase and expansion, and that's where we left it. This came as somewhat of a surprise that this meeting was held, and part of what was presented by the county was a map that showed the northern parcel. But it's- But it's my understanding that that map is what was presented to the state prior to the meeting with the council. And as a result of that meeting with the council, that the north section was no longer under consideration. So that's where I think we got ahead of ourselves. And as I understand it, and Weston, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it to date, that the north end has, is not on any type of planning or consideration, for example, expansion of the landfill.
So what we submitted... So what was submitted to the state that showed both sides was before we met with council. And after meeting with council, it was determined that, you know, if we purchased the property, we don't even own the property where the north expansion is being proposed. We don't own it now. It's going to come before council hopefully soon. But that if we acquire that property, we would use it as a borrow pit, because the landfill requires significant soil to operate and ultimately to close. And we do not have a decent amount of unmined material now that we own. So after the meeting with council, the, the use of the, I guess, going to the northern expansion, as it's called, onto the properties, we, we call the pots properties, that was taken off the table. And, and again, at the meeting we had, Councilman Joe Holloway brought up a good point. If we dig that out, there's no chance of an expansion in that direction in the future. So, yeah, we've, after, again, what we submitted to the state was well before we met with council, because we wanted to get our foot in the door. We were told there was a limited window for any potential expansion. Current landfill life capacity is at 22 years, and in 22 years, we're done. We'll have to ship our trash out, and we'll have no control over what those costs are. So what we're trying to do, to try to keep things economically feasible, and I know that's, you know, you have to consider other parameters, and, and we are considering that. But when, when we have to then ship out our waste to another landfill, we're at the whims of what landfill will accept it and what the cost start to truck it to New Jersey, or truck it to northern Virginia or Midwest. You know, so, so that's just something that we need to consider. You know, when we had a series of drainage issues across the county, we held drainage meetings at, across the county. I, I think it would be beneficial to talk solid waste, because there's a lot of misinformation about what, what goes on at the landfill, our recycling rate, and, you know, the Purdue numbers were mentioned, like that, that's chicken waste is being composted, so it's being diverted from the landfill. But it's something that we have one of the highest recycling rates in the state. We're in the top 10 counties. So we're doing great with our recycling program, and everything we divert from the landfill extends its life. So if we can educate people more on recycling, I think we can extend that 22 years even further. But it may be helpful to have meetings across the county and talk to people, because, yes, there's the people immediately impacted around with the landfill where it is. And there's arguments to be made about keeping it there, because we already have a scale house, we have leachate tanks, there's infrastructure that we'd have to recreate elsewhere. However, if you go countywide and you tell everybody that your, your cost to dispose of waste, whether you have a dump sticker, or you use Waste Management, or one of those companies, those costs could go up 50%, 100%. We, we don't know. If we don't know where we're putting our waste. So that's something that people on a fixed income, you know, if you're, if you have city water and sewer now, the rates went up this year. If you're in the county in an urban service district, it went up even more than, than a standard person. So, so when people are on a fixed income, having the water and sewer rates go up affect them significantly. Waste, their, their cost to dispose of the waste they generate will go up if, in 22 years, when this landfill closes. There isn't a cheaper option. And that's what was explained by the consultant that night, is that this is the cheapest option. Is it the best for quality of life? Probably not. Probably shipping it elsewhere and paying, paying a premium, you know, gets it away from us. But it's out of our control, and, and that's something that, you know, when you look at the finances of the landfill, it's an enterprise fund, and it's doing well. But if, if we have to then transition to sending it away, you know, it's, it's something that we can look into, and we can get numbers. We can look at Ocean City does it now, and I believe they pay $64 a ton. That may include transportation costs. We currently have $60 a ton, and our dump stickers, $60 a year. So, you know, those are things that, if we go across the county and say, all right, if that's $60 a year, or $60 a ton becomes $100, how does that affect you? And are you willing to pay that to not have a landfill in the county? So I, I think having discussions would help educate, and we could get input, and we can get the entire county involved. Maybe the people outside of Pittsville want a landfill. You know, maybe they got property to offer up, or a good idea. Maybe not. May, maybe we need to look into incineration and spending, you know, tens of millions of dollars on that type of technology. Maybe a regional solution is, is to, to be had. But I think having the conversation, educating on what we know, where we are, we can have MDE attend those meetings if they're available, and give the state viewpoint. I, I do think there's a chance to educate and get more citizen input, and I think we're going to work on that after this meeting.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Boston. So we're lucky in Wacomiko County, because we have one of the best minds in reference to Public Works with Mr. Young. He truly is an expert in this field and has the concerns of every citizen in Wacomiko County at heart. I say that earnestly. I also say that during the meetings, which not all of you have the opportunity to attend, that Councilman Davis did stand up and on a couple of occasions, nearly came across the table, to address his concerns about the, the, what he considered to be the inappropriate expansion of the landfill. So just wanted to alleviate your concerns in reference to that. That being said, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn Wacomiko County Council, so that we may convene as the Urban Services Commission.
Does it move?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. First item on the Urban Services Commission agenda, like to entertain a resolution to approve, excuse me, like to entertain a motion to approve resolution.
Would you like me to read that?
Excuse me?
Would you like me to read that?
You could do that. Some of the council members would like to take a small recess, if we could. Take a five-minute recess.
Okay.